Recovery Center. The one-stop hub provides comprehensive connections to help those hurt by the wildfires.
Two months after the devastation, the devastation and the grief continues for too many people.
We are here at one of our four impacted worker and family recovery centers. We have four throughout the city of Los Angeles, one in Culver City, in the Valley, in Boyle Heights, and this one here in South Los Angeles. Helping families and businesses, individuals who are impacted or displaced because of the wildfires. People have lost their homes, but people have also lost a significant income. There's been people who have lost their jobs and their livelihoods. And so what we're doing today is offering a one-stop hub to connect people to multiple resources so that they don't have to navigate, you know, all of the red tape and the bureaucracy. We're really trying to streamline that process for everyone impacted. We have a range of services that we're making available for families. We are offering comprehensive services from financial assistance to financial coaching. If they are behind on their rent or they're behind on their utility bills, we're helping to connect them with those resources. We're also, if they're a business, they're helping to apply for a business grant. If they were displaced and they've lost income, we're helping people apply for their impacted worker relief fund. And then also connecting people that are interested in other employment opportunities to the workforce development system to help them there.
So the Youth Development Department is here today to do a couple of things. One is to help connect young people to employment opportunities. We're also here to make referrals to young people who are seeking services such as access to mental health services, after-school program information, homework assistance, we can help them with that. We're also making sure that folks are aware of our Earn, Learn, Play website where they can find out about the programs and activities the city has to offer through our 18 different departments that serve young people. We had a session today with the survivors, people who've lost their homes, and they talked about this being one of the most comprehensive meetings that they've been, that they have attended. You look at the census data and the information about what the community needs, somebody has to do it. And it's beautiful when we can find a group of folk who are committed to meeting the needs, the relevant needs of families, from clothing to shelter to jobs.
So our organization, Community Bill, you know, we're a boots-on-the-ground organization, and I've had a chance to look in the eyes of people who are hurting. And I can do something about it, whether it's through influence, financial resources, or leveraging our corporate partners who have supported us greatly in this effort to help more people. And that's exactly what we do.
For more information, people can visit recovery.lacity.gov.
Although it's closed for regular activities, Pacific Palisades Rec Center has become central to utility operations in the neighborhood. Residents who are rebuilding will get reconnected here. And in the meantime, there's some good news about the water supply.
We're here at Unified Utilities Rebuild Operations Center at the Pacific Palisades Rec Center. We moved into this location week one after the fires. We brought our water and power crews here. We had an incident command post here with an incident commander. And from here, we deploy our power crews and our water crews to ensure that we were able to rebuild the power system and restore the water system. And we just shared great news that we're lifting the do not drink advisory for all of Palisades effective tomorrow. For those that are fortunate to have returned to their homes and businesses here in the Palisades, before using the water, we encourage you to run the water from all faucets for 10 minutes. We are also offering a $50 credit under bill because of the water they're going to use to flush the system. We are leaving dog hangers in their doors with like specific instructions on how to do so. We have restored power to thousands of homes and businesses. And as of yesterday, we are down to 143 customers that are located in very hard-to-reach areas. We're happy to be able to support our communities here. This is a center where you can come in when you're ready to rebuild and connect your utilities, and we have people here to support you.
As LA's heroes, our firefighters, police officers, and first responders fought tirelessly to protect our city. And two months since we have launched the largest disaster recovery operation in the history of the city of Los Angeles.
Getting greener and making the switch to EVs is an important decision for the city. At the South Coast Air Quality Management District, they keep up with the latest in clean air technologies, and their recent showcase aimed to help others do the same.
This is the South Coast A Q M D Technology Showcase. This event really is all about showcasing some of the latest clean air technologies to help us reduce emissions and to advance our goals of clean air. We're really delighted today to have over 30 vendors participating in this showcase. There's a variety of different types of technologies and equipments that are here. Some examples would be things like battery-electric trucks, battery-electric police vehicles, zero emission and battery-electric lawn and garden equipment, as well as air filtration units that help reduce residents' exposure to emissions.
We are working to electrify trucking. We all want clean air, right? None of us like breathing in particles. They make us sick, they clog our lungs. We don't feel good when we're breathing in air. So what we're trying to do here is, is clean up the air, get diesel trucks off the road, move to electric, and make sure that we all have clean air to breathe.
We at LA Sanitation have always considered ourselves stewards of the environment. We're here to look at the different types of electric vehicles. And as you can see behind me, we have a trash truck that we've been looking at. So we're testing and evaluating these vehicles to see how they will work for us. That's always been the goal and objective of LA Sanitation, that we have cleaner vehicles.
It is really amazing to see all the new technology available to people who want to make the switch from industrial combustion engines to EVs. Air quality is extremely important. We need to make sure that all of our communities are thriving and make sure we have a sustainable planet going forward.
There's more and more pollution in the air, and we want to have zero emissions, especially for our future generations.
All of us have to do our part. We're all here stewards of the earth. We got to make sure that we're taking care of it because we all want to leave it better than we found it. That's the goal.
At a recent free tax preparation fair, the Office of Councilwoman Tracy Park and LA's Community Investment for Families Department were onsite with financial volunteers. Together, they offered free help with filling out forms, filing taxes, and claiming credits.
I'm excited to be here today. We're partnering with Councilmember Tracy Park, and we're hosting a Free Tax Prep LA pop-up event.
I'm really happy that we have this tax prep fair here. You know, as President of the Neighborhood Council, we try to bring as many of these kinds of types of educational programming events to our community. So we're very thankful to Councilwoman Park's office and the Mayor's office for making this happen.
Additionally, to those financial-related resources is SALA, the Salvadoran American Leadership and Education Fund. SALA's mission is very simple. They want to be sure that immigrants and immigrant families know their rights. We also have care bags full of basic essentials that folks can pick up free of charge.
We are helping families complete their taxes, helping them claim important tax credits, like the earned income tax credit, the child tax credit. Families normally pay $200 to have their taxes done, and this is more money that you're putting in your family's pocket now. We have helped over 40 people file their tax return and help put over $30,000 in tax refunds back into their pockets.
For more information, visit our website at cd11.lacity.gov.
You can visit our website for more information, along with other events that we're hosting throughout the city.
The deadline to apply for FEMA disaster assistance has been extended. LA City's public housing is ranked as high-performing. Young Angelinos are helping other youth with a professional clothing drive. These stories up next on City Beat.
The FEMA deadline to apply for LA Wildlife Disaster Assistance has been extended to Monday, March 31, 2025. Disaster assistance can cover rent, temporary housing, home repairs, personal property losses, and other disaster-related needs not covered by insurance. The Federal Emergency Management Agency, known as FEMA, provides grants which do not have to be repaid, and FEMA assistance does not affect eligibility for Social Security or other federal benefits. In-person application assistance is available at two FEMA Disaster Recovery Centers, one in Altadena and one at UCLA Research Park in the city of LA. For more information or to apply online, visit disasterassistance.gov. For the 12th consecutive year, HACLA, LA City's Housing Authority, has achieved the High Performer Designation from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, known as HUD. The HUD evaluation measures the performance of public housing agencies in areas like property conditions and management practices. The High Performer status comes with key benefits, including improved access to HUD grants. According to HACLA, the designation recognizes their commitment to ensuring that public housing communities are well-maintained and meet federal standards. HACLA was established in 1938 and provides affordable housing, rental subsidy, and supportive resource services to over 200,000 Angelinos. For more information, visit hacla.org. LA City's Youth Development Department is hosting a professional clothing drive in partnership with LA Sanitation and Environment and the city's Youth Source Centers. From now until May 14, the department is seeking donations of new or gently-used workwear clothing. According to the Youth Development Department, professional clothing can help young Angelinos succeed at job interviews and in advancing their careers. Professional clothing donations can be made at Boyle Heights Technology Youth Center, Goodwill Youth Source Center Panorama, and Watts Labor Community Action Committee. The city's Youth Development Department supports young Angelinos with programs and services and oversees the LA City Youth Council. For more information, visit ydd.lacity.gov.
The latest in adaptable and accessible technologies was on display at the Abilities Expo, and practical experiences were encouraged. From goods to voting access and everything in between, this expo brings a diversely-abled community together.
Well, we're here at the beautiful Los Angeles Convention Center. We're here for Abilities Expo 2025. This is the largest disability-centered event west of the Mississippi. The Abilities Expo really can change people's lives because there's so many resources that people need. It's a real tough time right now for people with disabilities, but if you need more transportation, there's all sorts of transportation modes here. If you need clothing that's more adaptable to your day-to-day life and needs, it's here. We've got people who have household goods, ways to, you know, build ramps and make your space more accessible. We've got bikes, we've got wheelchairs to go out on parks and recreation with. Really, almost anything and everything a person with disability might need.
Anybody can benefit from seeing all of the latest and the greatest technology, resources, workshops for anybody who has a disability, family members who are disabled, or maybe you're getting a little bit older and you need a little bit of assistance. There's something here for everyone.
My favorite thing about the Abilities Expo is that I get to see lots of people with disabilities. And I just tried the medium, rock climbing, and it was, it was a little difficult at first since I'm at medium, and once I take my time, I can just be good at it. But I'm pretty good at this.
I like to see like a lot of people interacting, doing hands-on stuff despite their disabilities. It's just, it's really exciting to see. Even if you don't have a disability, it's fun for people to be more self-aware.
Having this kind of an exposition makes people understand that there is help out there. I have a daughter who has multiple disabilities, so it's really very personal for me. I think this is more relevant even today because a lot of our issues are under attack. And we really need to, for us to really stand up and to make sure that the services and benefits that people of our, you know, vulnerable communities continue to help them because, you know, they're human beings too, and they can contribute many ways into our society. So it's very important.
As state treasurer, I chair the Cal ABLE Program, and it is a savings program for people with disabilities who can save up to $19,000 in their own name without jeopardizing their SSI or SSDI. Now they have some level of comfort and independence, knowing that they have money saved up in case of an emergency.
It's so important for the Department on Disability to be part of this event because this is how we connect to community. This is how we learn about what people in our community need. We're a very diverse community. This is how we meet all the other vendors and all the companies that are really committed to supporting people with disabilities. You can reach the City of Los Angeles Department on Disability online at disability.lacity.gov.
Great to see people connecting to solutions and services at the Abilities Expo. If you were looking for a party in the 1-5, your chances doubled with the Gaelic and Garlic Festival. Irish and Italian communities celebrated two cultures in one event, creating an unstoppable wave of music, food, and dancing.
We are here in San Pedro downtown for our third annual Gaelic and Garlic Festival. We're going to have entertainment and food and fun to celebrate our unique Irish-American culture and Italian-American culture. Well, here in the harbor area, we have this great Italian-American community that grew up around the fishing industry and around all of our activities in the harbor. We also have some Irish-American history. John T. Gaffey himself was an Irish-American who came and settled here and was one of the founders of this community way back even before LA took over San Pedro. So we have this great Irish-American tradition, and we have a really deep Italian-American tradition. And we just thought it made sense, right before St. Patrick's Day, to blend them together and call it Gaelic and Garlic and celebrate both.
It's festivals like this that keep the community engaged. San Pedro's a great community, a family community. There's a lot of Italians in the community, there's some Irish, and we're here to celebrate St. Patrick's Day. We've got free food, free entertainment, and we have a beer garden with some cocktails. We have cannoli, desserts, and a lot of entertainment.
I think Gaelic and Garlic is, is an amazing event. It's like a melding of cultures, and we do that as well in our pipe band, City of Angels Pipe Band. So we've got a lot of people from different backgrounds, different diversities. And so I think it's really exciting performing for the community.
This kind of event is perfect for us. We love that it's a melding of Irish and Italian culture. We ourselves are a bunch of mixed cultures in the band, and we all rally around Scottish culture. So to bring Scottish music and Celtic arts to Gaelic and Garlic is incredible.
These types of events, like Gaelic and Garlic and so many other events in the 1-5, are really designed to bring people together, to make sure that all of our communities know each other, support one another. It creates a network, a fabric of community, so that we can be supportive in happy times like today, and we can support one another in tough times. We learned growing up that we are really a blend of great immigrant communities. We have Japanese Americans, we have Italian Americans, Croatian Americans, Irish Americans, really a melting pot of so many different cultures. We've all come from somewhere else, and we need to make sure that we're all working together. So for today, for Gaelic and Garlic, we say, "Selancha en salud." Everyone should have a great time here today in downtown San Pedro for Gaelic and Garlic.
In this week's feature story, Recovery is an Active Process. Following the devastating wildfire in the Palisades, we catch up with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. The Army Corps is doing all it can to optimize and expedite the progress of wildfire recovery.
My time at the United States Military Academy as a math instructor leads me to look at this as an optimization problem. Where are the bottlenecks? Where are the things that are preventing us from going faster? So my approach is to find everything that we can do to expedite the recovery. The right of entry inflow, haul distances to landfills, capacity at that landfill, the turnaround time, the number of dump trucks that we employ, the number of excavators at a particular parcel, the number of crews executing hazardous site assessments, asbestos abatement, debris removal are all things that I'm monitoring to make sure that anywhere we have an opportunity to remove a bottleneck, we do that. The local elected officials have been absolutely amazing. I'm being asked daily, what obstacles are you experiencing? At every turn, we're working together, and I think the collaboration that I've witnessed is why we're able to go fast. It's why we're able to get after this task the way we have been thus far. I want the public to know that there's absolutely nothing that we can do to erase the heartbreak that they've experienced. The devastation from this fire is unbelievable. When you drive around and you see the loss, you see what has happened here. But I am encouraged by the resilience that I've witnessed. I'm honored to be one of the many that are contributing to this recovery effort. I want the public to know that we are going to remain lockstep with local, state, and other federal agencies to make sure that this is done right. There's a lot of work yet to be done, but we're not going anywhere, and I'm excited to be a part of this recovery.
In this week's Things to Do, support the close shaves at a St. Baldur's event, learn how to compost, and dive into student science projects at Cabrillo Marine Aquarium. All this up next on Things to Do.
The annual St. Baldur's Challenge is on, and when it comes to fighting childhood cancer, the Los Angeles Fire and Police Departments always put the fun in fundraising. On Saturday, March 29, you can show your support for fire and police personnel who are raising funds and awareness by getting their heads shaved. Join Councilmember John Lee at the Porter Ranch St. Baldur's Event, where attendees can enjoy a pancake sausage fundraiser along with fire and police apparatus displays, face painting, magicians, music, and much more. Head to the vineyards at Porter Ranch for this LAFD LAPD St. Baldur's Event on Saturday, March 29 at 9:00 a.m. For more information, visit stbaldur's.org/events/lafdlapd. Join the green waste specialists of LA City Sanitation and Environment for a free home composting workshop on Saturday, March 29. Learn how to compost, take home a plant, and enjoy a raffle during the event. The home composting workshop will show you how you can turn everyday kitchen scraps and yard trimmings into a nutrient-rich soil enhancer. There's a free garden plant for each participant to take home, so please register on Eventbrite for your place at the workshop. Head to Stoner Recreation Center for the home composting workshop on Saturday, March 29 at 9:00 a.m. Find out more under the Education and Sustainability tab at sanitation.lacity.gov. Join the Department of Recreation and Parks at Cabrillo Marine Aquarium as they celebrate the work of young scientists on Sunday, March 30. The Young Scientist Symposium is a showcase of students' independent science projects conducted under the mentorship of staff at Cabrillo Marine Aquarium. The students will be presenting their findings at the symposium and sharing their experience of the science program. Friends, family, staff, volunteers, and aquarium guests are all welcome to attend and learn about the students' accomplishments. Celebrate these student scientists at the Young Scientist Symposium, taking place on Sunday, March 30 at 12:00 p.m. For more information, visit cabriomarineaquarium.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's all for this week. I'm Susan Huckle, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org. We're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA This Week.
Ten members present, so we will begin our regularly scheduled council meeting. Good morning and welcome to the members of the public and the members of the city council. Today is Tuesday, I'm sorry, today is Wednesday. Today is Wednesday, the 26th day of March in the year 2025. My name is Marquise Harris-Dossen. I serve as president of this council. Public comment for today's meeting will be taken here in the John Ferraro Council Chambers. Mr. Clerk, let's begin our proceedings by calling the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Bloomfield, Harris-Dossen, Hernandez, Hut, Urado, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Rahm, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Jaroslawski. Ten members present in court, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes of March 25th, 2025.
Councilmember Jaroslawski moves. Councilmember Hernandez seconds. What's next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Padilla moves. Councilmember Price seconds. What's next?
If I may run through the agenda, sir. Items 1 through 21 are items for which public hearings have been held. The planning and land use management committee reports for items 17 and 18 have been submitted and are available online in the respective council files. Items 22 through 33 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 34 through 40 are closed session items considered by the Budget and Finance Committee. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, without objection, those items are before us. At this time, I'll call on members for any special items that they would wish to call special. On my left, the west side of the horseshoe, any specials? Seeing none, on the right, I see Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, I have an amendment for item six that's circulating.
Okay. Item six has an amendment that has been seconded and is in circulation. Any other specials? Mr. Price? Not today? All right. It's a good day. All right, Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on items 1 through 5.
All right.
Seven through 21.
All right, items 1 through 5 and 7 through 21 are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Mr. President, the ordinance for item eight will be held over to Wednesday, April 2nd, 2025, for second consideration unless reconsidered with all members present.
All right. Councilmember Urado? No? All right.
Sorry. Yes, Council President, thank you so much. I'm calling item seven special, please.
Seven, we just voted on seven. Is it special for comments or a separate vote or an amendment?
It's for an amendment.
All right, so we've got to take a vote to reconsider item seven? All right, so reconsideration of item seven is before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right. All right, and you have an amendment that's been seconded and is in circulation. All right. Great, thank you. Any other specials before we go any further? All right, what's next, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, the council may consider closed session items 34 through 40 considered by the Budget and Finance Committee.
Chairwoman Jaroslawski.
Thank you. I move that this item, closed session items 34 through 40 were considered in BNF on March 18th. I recommend approval of these items.
All right. Can we read those items into the record?
Thank you, Mr. President. For item 34, in the case entitled Sarah Black versus City of Los Angeles, Etal, there's a recommendation to expend up to $300,000 in settlement. For item 35, in the case entitled Farashtev Manchuri versus City of Los Angeles, Etal, there's a recommendation to expend up to $350,000 in settlement. For item 36, in the case entitled Bridget Christian versus City of Los Angeles, Etal, there's a recommendation to expend up to $390,000 in settlement. For item 37, in the case entitled Bolina Gorbán versus City of Los Angeles, Etal, there's a recommendation to expend up to $425,000 in settlement. For item 38, in the case entitled Giselle Ayar versus City of Los Angeles, Etal, there's a recommendation to expend up to $500,000 in settlement. For item 39, in the case titled Gabriela Sabet Bakstach versus City of Los Angeles, Etal, there's a recommendation to expend up to $500,000 in settlement. And for item 40, in the case entitled Onen Lopez Nolasco versus City of Los Angeles, Department of Public Works, Etal, there's a recommendation to expend up to $750,000 in settlement.
All right, those items are now before us. The recommendation from the Budget Chair, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, what's next?
Mr. President, the council may proceed to presentations.
All right, we have very exciting presentations this morning. The first one to be led by our own councilwoman from the seventh district, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. Good morning, colleagues. Well, I'm very excited, and come, get over here. I'm very excited that today we will be celebrating and recognizing two remarkable organizations that continue to carry forward an important and iconic legacy of our great, one of our greatest civil rights leaders in our nation's history, Cesar Chavez. As Angelenos and as a city that lives and survives on labor, on the precious, hard-working people who sacrificed so much, and particularly when we talk about the sacrifices that are made by the farmworkers that keep us fed, in good times and in bad, as we saw them toil the fields during COVID with very little protections, if any protections. We are here celebrating the legacy and the remarkable strength and endurance of a community that has continued to show up for us in good times and in bad. And it's for that reason that we are here today celebrating the remarkable legacy of an iconic leader in the continued work of both the Cesar Chavez Foundation and the National Chavez Center, two organizations that are not only preserving history... National Chavez Center, two organizations that are not only preserving history but actively transforming lives today. Could you please join me in giving them a great round of applause? Now, we know this work wasn't just led by Cesar Chavez alone. It was joined by other incredible visionary leaders like Dolores Huerta and Gilbert Padilla. They knew that a union could fight for fair wages and safe conditions in the fields, but it would take an entire movement to remedy the injustices that followed farmworkers home. And I will tell you, I am incredibly proud to be leading this presentation today. As the daughter of working class immigrants, as the granddaughter and daughter of family members, my dad worked in the fields as a young man because, like so many of our families, that was the work that was availed and afforded to working families to make it in this country when they first arrived. And so many of our stories lead us there. So many of the Filipino-American stories were in those fields as well. And so it's for that reason that I'm really proud to be celebrating and honoring this incredible legacy that is deserving of so much respect and admiration. Because it was about uplifting Latino communities and working families and ensuring that they had access to affordable housing, education, healthcare, and a dignified life. The vision lives on with the Cesar Chavez Foundation and the National Chavez Center, two organizations that are actively transforming lives today through this work. The Chavez Foundation was born from the understanding in the 1960s. Today, seven decades later, the foundation continues its mission of realizing Cesar Chavez's life's work. It uplifts Latinos, working families, inspiring and transforming communities through its vital social enterprises. The foundation's impact is felt in communities across four southwestern states where they have built or renovated more than four dozen high-quality, affordable housing communities. These are not just buildings. They are homes with community rooms, C-Sipuete learning centers, providing after-school programming for youth, and senior centers helping our elders stay engaged and active. Together, these efforts serve thousands of residents with assets approaching $1 billion. The Chavez Foundation also owns and operates Chavez Media, reaching millions with Spanish and English language broadcasts and digital radio stations across California, Arizona, Nevada, and Georgia. Its flagship Radio Campesina, founded by Cesar Chavez in 1983, which was one of its main tools to organize farmworkers, continues to entertain, educate, keeping Latinos and working families informed and empowered. And through its education fund, the foundation is dedicated to building a just society, offering vital services and educational tools to under-resourced communities, always following Cesar's belief in serving both the heart and the mind. We also honor the National Chavez Center, an essential arm of the Chavez Foundation. It's dedicated to preserving and promoting Cesar Chavez's legacy, not only as a historical figure, but as an inspiration for future generations. The center owns, manages, and preserves historic sites such as Forty Acres in Delano, California, where the farmworker movement began. It also stewards Nuestra Señora Reina de la Paz, or La Paz in Quin, where Cesar Chavez spent his final years. A portion of this 187-acre property is now home to the Cesar I Chavez National Monument, visited by thousands each year, managed in partnership with the National Park Service, which means the Cesar Chavez Foundation's fundraising efforts are now more important than ever, given that federal funding is being pulled from our national parks. The center also oversees Via La Paz Conference and Events Center, where activists, labor leaders, and community organizations still gather, fulfilling Cesar Chavez's dream of a place for learning, planning, and empowerment. And through those programs, national initiatives, and annual celebrations, the National Cesar Chavez Center ensures that Cesar Chavez's core values, nonviolence, service to others, and community, remains alive and relevant today. It now gives me great pleasure to introduce our speaker today, our CEO of the Cesar Chavez Foundation, Manuel Bernal. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning. Good morning, councilmembers and esteemed community leaders. As Councilmember Rodriguez very well mentioned, my name is Manuel Bernal, and I have the honor of serving as the president and CEO of the Cesar Chavez Foundation. On behalf of the Cesar Chavez Foundation Board of Directors, the Chavez family, and the entire Cesar Chavez Foundation organization, some of the staff of which was with me here today, I want to express my deep gratitude for this resolution recognizing the legacy of Cesar Chavez and the ongoing work of the foundation that bears his name. Let me take a small tangent. Andres Chavez, grandson of Cesar Chavez, who is the executive director of the National Chavez Center, and that is a nonprofit subsidiary of the Cesar Chavez Foundation, was supposed to be here today, but he is not. You may know that Arizona Congressman Raoul Giralaba passed away recently. He was a key ranking member of the National Resources Committee in Congress, which oversees the National Park Service. Congressman Giralaba was key in supporting and creating the Chavez National Monument that Congress, that City Councilmember Rodriguez mentioned. It's the 398th unit of the National Park Service, and it really helps keep Cesar's story alive for all Americans. In addition to that, he was always a staunch supporter of farmworkers. And lastly, he represented the area in Arizona where Caesar was born, Yuma, Arizona. We felt it was the right thing to do to have Andres go and be part of the services today. And as I speak here today, his services are being held in Arizona. So with that said, I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to all of you, to the city council for your, for this continued support. I'd like to particularly mention the support of councilmembers Padilla, Rodriguez, Harris Dawson, Price, and Hut for your recognition of the Cesar Chavez Legacy Awards. Your partnership helps ensure that Cesar Chavez's legacy and values continues to inspire generations. Cesar Chavez was more than a labor leader. He was a servant of the people, a voice for the homeless, a man guided by a deep moral conviction and dignity and justice belonged to everyone, no matter their background or station in life. His life's work was rooted in the belief that through nonviolence, sacrifice, and collective action, real change is possible. This year marks the 90th anniversary of the Delano Grape Strike, a defining moment in American labor history. It was led by farmworkers, ordinary people who risked everything to demand fair treatment and respect. That movement was not just about wages or working conditions, or about grapes or lettuce. It was about human dignity, about the right to be seen, to be heard, and to be valued. Today, we at the Cesar Chavez Foundation carry Caesar's legacy forward, not only by remembering his contributions, but by continuing the work that he began. At the Cesar Chavez Foundation, we are committed to uplifting the working families through affordable housing development, educational initiatives, working with schools, teachers, parents, and students. We also do community empowerment and inspiration by disseminating fact-based information and entertainment to the mass audiences that need to hear our word, and enabling tomorrow's community leaders through the National Chavez Center into positive social change, using Cesar's teachings as a training tool. We believe, as Caesar believed, that justice is not a single act or event. It's a lifelong commitment to building a better, more equitable world, and it takes a movement. There's a line from the Farmworker Prayer with Cesar Roy himself that continues to guide us. "Let the spirit flourish and grow, so that we will never tire of the struggle." This is just not a hope. It is a charge to teach for each one of us that we not grow weary in the work of justice, that we face our challenges with courage, that we move forward with love, even in the face of division and disagreement. He also once said, "You cannot uneducate the person who has learned to read. You cannot oppress the people who are not afraid anymore." That's what our work is about, empowering people with knowledge, opportunity, and the confidence to believe in their own voice. Cesar believed ordinary people could do extraordinary things, and we carry that belief forward every day. We are honored to be recognized by the City of Los Angeles, a community that values service, equity, and the power of people coming together for the greater good. We are proud to be your partners in this work. Before I say my goodbyes, I would like to also acknowledge, at a personal level, it's kind of a very surreal moment for me. Yes, I have been with the Cesar Chavez Foundation for 25 years, but someplace in there, I sneaked in 10 years working for the City of LA. I'm actually a technically retired City of LA employee. So, yes. Thank you. So, again, thank you again for this honor. May we continue working together on the path of justice, dignity, and hope for all. Again, and as Caesar always reminded us, si se puede.
Thank you so much, Manuel. And as noted, Andres is continuing his service during this very difficult time of losing such an important ally that was instrumental in helping to memorialize Cesar's legacy at the federal level. And, you know, one of the things that I appreciated when I first sat down with Andres a few years ago was when he was talking about his tata. And the reason why is because as the, as the firstborn grandchild, my grandfather was also a tata. And I appreciated the synergies around being, you know, children of these important legacies, that we are instrumental in preserving that story and that legacy, and making sure that it will reverberate in the change that helps to uplift other communities. And that's what I'm really grateful for, is the continued work of everybody, everybody that is here, from the descendants of the very farmworkers. When I think about people like Robert Rivas, our speaker, and again, the work continues. And in the face of adversity, particularly given what we're seeing at the federal level right now, we must continue to band together and be strong in the face of this adversity to continue to be part of this reverberating legacy that continues to inspire people. And when I think about these particular chambers, and I think about my very dear friend and departed treasured ally, Richard Alatorre, who walked with Cesar to help lead those changes here in Los Angeles when no one looked like us around this horseshoe, I'm really grateful to be in a position today to continue to bring in this memory and this legacy and celebrate and honor all the incredible work that you continue to do and represent for all of communities in this greater western region. So thank you all so much for your incredible work in preserving this very important legacy and history, and for all of the incredible contributions that Cesar Chavez has given to this country. We are forever grateful. So thank you. And with that, colleagues, I'd like to open up an opportunity for, for any colleagues that wish to speak.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Rodriguez, for bringing this presentation, and thank you so much for your service to the city. Having the, the recognition of Cesar Chavez at the heart of our city, at the, the place where the city was founded, is appropriate for who we are and, most importantly, who we want to become, not just to ourselves, but to the nation, especially at this moment that we face in history. So we are extremely grateful for your service and look forward to the service that you will provide in the future. Councilmember Padilla.
Let me begin by thanking Councilmember Rodriguez for bringing this presentation here, and everyone from the foundation and all of the great work that you do. You know, I've become incredibly cynical and really sad since the last presidential election in, in just my observation of how people are no longer getting involved civically. But I think foundations like yourself just kind of remind us that it's not too late, and that there's people from the past that we can look to and be inspired from. And I hope younger folks and new leaders remember who came before them, because it's a critical time. So thank you for what you do, and please know that you have a home here in Los, in the building, and I look forward to partnering with you to hopefully do something in my district where we can kind of, you know, show young leaders that it's not too late. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you so much, colleagues. And it is now my distinct honor, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, to present two resolutions, one recognizing the Cesar Chavez Foundation and the National Chavez Center. We are honored and proud to have you here joining us today, and may the, may your work continue to reverberate across every hall of power, to continue to ensure that we are uplifting the voices of the people that really matter. God bless you all for the incredible work that you do in keeping Cesar Chavez's memory and legacy alive.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Another big round of applause as the guests exit. And as they're exiting, I want to call on the councilmember from the 10th District, Councilmember Heather Hut, for a special march presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, everybody. Today, I'm excited to host the Black Business Association, which we know in the community as the BBA, and the distinguished honorees of their 2025 Salute to Black Women. For 55 years, the BBA has been more than an organization. It's been a force that has shaped the landscape of black business in Los Angeles and nationally. As a kid, I recall its founder, Skip Cooper, organizing black businesses in Los Angeles. He dedicated his whole life to uplifting that part and also encouraging black women to be in business. So this is the 22nd Annual Salute to Black Women Businesses, and it's a conference and award ceremony. It shines a light on women who are not just making history, they're rewriting it. Today, we celebrate stories of triumph, of breaking barriers, and of unwavering commitment. I'm privileged to stand alongside three extraordinary women, whose fields may vary, but their impact is really undeniable. Delphine Pruitt, Vice President and Business Access Advisor at U.S. Bank. But I met Delphine many years ago, and this may be one of the few people in the world that spent time with Mandela. Also, Sonia Young Adams, who is a fierce advocate for women's health. She's the president of California Black Women's Health Project. And Tania Luckett, Chief Executive Officer at True Tech Logistics, which shares that women are in technology and in logistics. We have other women that you see that are up on the poster and the sign that are still at work right now, so they couldn't be with us. But we are honoring the, the full association. This year's theme is Moving Forward Together: Women Educating and Inspiring Generations. It's a call to action. It's a call to action. It's a testament to the power of women and shared knowledge and the ripple effect that goes along with it. These women are not just paving a way, they're lighting a path for generations to come. Looking at these remarkable women, I know that two, a couple of things, they don't look like what they've been through. That's what I know for sure. And I see resilience, innovation, and a profound commitment to lifting others. In honor to acknowledge their fortitude, not just during Women's History Month, but really throughout every single day. To all of you, thank you for serving the women of our city. I'm excited to work with you all and to continue to move forward as we build a Los Angeles where every little black girl knows her worth, sees her potential, and feels the unwavering support of her community through women like you. Thank you so much for everything you do. And now, I'd like to invite the first woman president of the BBA, Sarah Harris, to come up and speak.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Hutt. Yes, and you failed to mention yourself, so I'm going to say it for you. But first, let me say, I am Sarah Harris, President and CEO of the Black Business Association. I've been a member for more than 25 years and proud to be the first female president of the organization. We are currently celebrating and holding our 22nd Annual Salute to Black Women, first started by our current Chairman and President Emeritus, Mr. Earl Skip Cooper II. And it is a testament to the vision that he had so many decades ago, to be able to uplift, honor, and appreciate the work, the power, the influence that black women have. And so, on this Saturday, we will be hosting, again, our 22nd Annual with an awards luncheon, but also, too, an amazing women's leadership symposium, as well as our Role Models for Success Youth Forum, and a 40-plus vendors at our vendor fair. And so, it's going to be an empowering and electric day. But what I want to do is to be able to uplift and put into the record the eight honorees that we do have this year because they are amazing. So, if I could just reiterate, we do have a recently elevated Brigadier General, Yvonne Cagle, Dr. Yvonne Cagle. She's a U.S. astronaut and first United States Air Force Flight Surgeon. As a matter of fact, it's so unique, it's the only one awarded, selected for that position. She will be receiving the President's Award. We do have, again, Ms. Delphine D. Pruitt, Vice President, Business Access Advisor for U.S. Bank, and a strong advocate for, with the Black Business Association, will be receiving our Advocate's Excellence Award. Not here today, but wanted to be here so much, is Michelle Gaskill Haynes, who is President of Kaiser Foundation Health Plan and Hospitals of Southern California and Hawaii, receiving the Leadership Impact Award. Also not here today, again, desperately wanted to be here today, is Ms. Kelly Todd Griffin, founding president and CEO of the Black Women's Collective Empowerment Institute, also receiving the Legacy Impact Award. Today, to my right here, we do have Ms. Tanaya Luckett, CEO of True Tech Logistics, Business Excellence Award. To my left here, excuse me, not present here today, is Dr. Carmen Downs, who is President of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women for Los Angeles, receiving the Service Impact Award. And also, we do have Ms. Sonia Young Adam, represented here by Ms. Frances Saunders, behind me, CEO of California Black Women's Health Project, receiving the Service Impact Award. These ladies are phenomenal, and we do salute them here today. And I cannot leave without saying that we also have, as our Chairman Award, very, very proud to say, the Honorable Ms. Heather Hutt, receiving, again, the Chairman Award as the first black woman to serve the 10th District. We know that she's a very, very busy woman. We are sad that she wouldn't be here on Saturday, so we brought the plaque to her today that she will be receiving when we convene on Saturday. Congratulations. She deserves it.
So, wow. Thank you, BBA. Golly, I hate being the crybaby councilwoman, but I really appreciate being seen, and I think everyone here feels the same way. You do a lot of hard work, and you just, you don't even do it to be seen, but it's very nice. So, thank you, BBA. I have flowers for the honorees, and I just want to thank you for your wonderful work. We have certificates of recognition for each one of the honorees, signed by all members of the City Council for your hard work and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, councilwomen. We're going to give you a few minutes and hear from Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Hutt, thank you for bringing this extraordinary organization to council today. I'm just so honored to welcome Sarah Harris and officers, members, and honorees of the Black Business Association. You know, this organization has been a real pillar in the community for a long, long time, providing information and inspiration. And Sarah, as President, you have taken us to a whole new level. So, I just want to say thank you for your leadership, thank you for your commitment, and thank you for being a real positive role model, men and women, of what's possible. So, congratulations, keep up the work. And to the honorees, outstanding honorees who are here, and those who couldn't join us, we're just so proud of you. Congratulations, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Councilmember Hutt.
Thank you. I'm all at a loss for words. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, and thank you to the Black Business Association, the leadership and the honorees this year. Happy Women's History Month. And with that, I'll ask the city attorney and the clerk to prepare us for public comment.
So, for people providing public comment, when it's your turn to speak at the podium, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You'll have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, for the items that are open for public comment. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment. During the general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else within the city's subject matter jurisdiction. We'll tell you when your time's up. When speaking on the agenda items, you need to be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're on topic, you'll get one brief warning from me or the President. At that point, you need to get immediately, clearly, on topic. If you don't do so, or you get stray off-topic, you'll forfeit your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. The items that are open for public comment are items six, seven, and 22 through 33. So, again, that's six, seven, and 22 through 33. And if the interpreter would interpret this for everyone in the audience, if you're speaking Spanish and you want a translation into English, please stop every couple of sentences so that the translator can interpret, and we will hold the clock while the interpreter is speaking so that you'll get the same amount of speaking time as everyone else.
I will now call names for public comment. Maria Vazquez, Sandra Cox, Yaritza Gonzalez, Veronica Wiles, Marisela Granados.
I'm here for general comment.
You have a minute. Please go ahead.
Hello, councilmembers, and my name is Maria Vazquez. I'm a LAX worker. I'm a proud member of SEIU USWW. And the reason I'm here is because I've worked at LAX for about three years, and we've been suffering with you guys not passing our vote for our living wage. And so, raising the wage will improve healthcare for LAX workers and will change my life and the lives of my coworkers, who are struggling every day to make ends meet through LAX function. The policy was introduced almost two years ago, and we can't wait no longer. Please vote yes.
Thank you. When you come to the podium, please let us know which items you want to speak to.
This faggot wants to speak on all motherfucking items and my non-motherfucking general public comments, sir!
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Regarding immigration, this country was built on a formula called Black Sabbath. And the words of the Black Sabbath of our government was to protect America and allow us due process of our rights for entry into any motherfucking state in the United States. However, regarding immigration-related rights, we are fucked. This country has run itself into a fucking situation where immigration has become discriminatory and unconstitutional, when our mothers and fathers and grandparents, like Padilla, brought us illegally into this country, and we fucked it up. The same caliber of person like Jose Luis Wezar from Saquetecas, now a criminal Lompoc, came into this country to fuck it up. So, there has to be a process legalized legally, entry or no entry. I serve America under Black Sabbath. I am Black Sabbath, and I will be Black Sabbath in my demise because this fucking country is so fucked up. Either you allow people in this country to work for you niggers, or you don't. I didn't use the C-word today, I used the N-word because you taught me that word. You taught me that word on this motion in my hand, sir.
So, you're off-topic, and you should go on to one of the other items.
I'm going to my next item now, sir. Yes, sir. Just like a communist country, sir.
Move on to a topic, Mr. Spindler-Herman.
Item 25, sir. Yes, sir. Approve $319,000 for addition of homelessness? I know what it's like to be homeless. I was a victim of homelessness, and this country fucked me up mentally. What did you do to protect me, Nazarian? What did you do to protect me, mommy Padilla, when I was homeless for two years, surfing from couch to house, to city to home, to beds? What did you do for me? A billion-dollar deficit, you got it out, $1.6 billion under HHH, bitch, bitch, bitch. And I am upset. I'm an American now into my non-agenda public comment.
Go ahead.
This motion on rules taught me one thing, that this communist country in California has taught me that I can't use the N-word, I can't say the C-word anymore, which violates my constitutional belief in rights as a person.
Mr. Herman, please face the horseshoe.
I am talking to the people. We, the people, need to know why I'm upset, when you use emotion, to use evidence to discriminate against an American citizen like me, Mr. Dawson. This country, Mr. Dawson, is a country of rules and regulations. It's called due process, sir. And I'll be the first nigger to say so, under Brandonberg versus Ohio, U.S. 395-444-1969, dirty nigger. Thank you, sir.
All right, your time has expired, and the next speaker.
Before the next speaker comes, I'd like to call out more names. Sherry Bondstill, Neda Quintanilla.
Please vacate the podium, Mr. Herman.
Armando Munoz, Amanda Arnbar.
Hi, Speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
Items six and seven and general public comment.
So, you have two minutes for the Adams file, hold by a minute for general. Please begin.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. My name is Yaritza Gonzalez, and I'm here on behalf of Caresin, the Central American Resource Center. As a legal service provider, Caresin supports the motion to provide critical services to meet the increased demand for legal services and education and outreach for immigrant families and communities in the city of L.A. L.A. is more, home to more than 1 million immigrants. We can only expect the need for legal services to increase as immigrants in L.A. continue to face attacks from the federal immigration system, especially with the threats of mass deportation from President Donald Trump. L.A. took swift action to protect the immigrant community by passing the L.A. Sanctuary City Ordinance last year, and in 2017, it took critical action to bolster the L.A. Justice Fund, now known as Represent L.A., which kept hundreds of families together. Now, the city must double down in strengthening services that are lifelines to immigrants in L.A. The City of L.A. must take bold actions and stand unwaveringly with our immigrant communities as hostility towards immigrants escalates across the country. We urge the City Council to pass these motions immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Spindler and Mr. Herman, so your constant motion to the side of the speaker is distracting. We're having trouble paying attention to him. This is your first, last, and only warning. If you keep intentionally moving like that and trying to distract us, you may be rejected from the meeting. Hi, Speaker. Which items did you want to speak to?
Good morning. My name is Marisela Granados. I'm here to talk about the pantry.
Okay, so you have a minute. Please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Marisela Granados. I've been working at the pantry for 26 years. It's been almost a month since the trust from Mr. Riordan closed the pantry. We're here to ask for support, for you to help us reopen the pantry and give us, we stay out of work, we're asking for your help to reopen the pantry again. I have kids that I need to support, I have a family, my coworkers have a family as well, and we just ask for support to open the restaurant again. This Friday, we have a food event, and we're asking if you guys could join us on that day. It's going to be from 7:00 to 9:00. We would like you guys to show support to us. Thank you.
Hello, Speaker.
Hello, good morning. My name is Neda Quintanilla. I'm here to provide general public comment.
Please go ahead.
I'm speaking today on City Council File 201041-S5, which is now scheduled to be heard by City Council on, by the Council on Tuesday. A few of us attended the Transportation Committee meeting this morning, and we were pleased to learn that this City Council file has been rescheduled from Friday's agenda to Tuesday. I wanted to leave you with, over the key message. LADLT has failed to uphold its commitments to expanding EV car share in South and in East L.A. Instead, LADLT now seeks to allow blink mobility to dismantle 40 public EV car share stations in City Council Districts 1, 8, 9, 10, and 14. Given the urgency of this issue, we urge the Council to take the following immediate actions: to delay the vote on Council File 2- To delay the vote on council file 201041-S5 and remove it from the agenda until, until LADOT provides full transparency on the rationale behind the allocation of funds and the dismantling of the program. Halt the dismantling of the 40 Blue LA EV car share stations until a sustainable transition plan is developed and publicly reviewed. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi Speaker.
Hello, my name is Ivana, I am also a part of the Trust at the LA team. I would like to continue the concerns as not only a resident but as a person who has been very involved in the community engagement aspect of the Blue LA EV car share mobility program. I would like to continue to say that we would like, we would urge the council to take the following immediate actions in addition to what Neda Quintanilla included. To direct LADOT's not, not to reallocate the 1.5 million in CARB step funds without first earmarking replacement funds to ensure these resources are used as originally intended to benefit South LA and East LA communities, once again impacted by council districts 8, 9, 10, and 15. We would urge the council to hold LADOT accountable for failing to implement equitable clean mobility investments, address the structural racism within LADOT and mandate to end, to transportation redlining in South LA and other BIPOC communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello Speaker.
Good morning, my name is Cidis Barrios, I'm gonna do general comment and I'm speaking in, on every item so I can get my three minutes. But I want to start off with, I'm very offended every time I come to city council and I have to listen to these people, I feel threatened for my life. Every time I, I feel harassed. So this should not be allowed, this behavior or this type of, so I wanted to start off with that, but I am here for something else. We were in the, I'm with Neda and with Ivana, we were in the Transportation Committee, we're here to speak on council file 201041-S5. And I'm just so thrown off because of these people, I can't even speak because this is how angry I am every time I come here and I have to listen to the way they speak to our council people on race and this council hasn't taken a, a stand. I can't even speak now, just so angry. I'm here to speak on a very important matter, this impact in South LA. LADOT is removing clean investments and has redlined South LA. South of MLK, we have 39 square miles, 650,000 people that don't have access to metro e-bikes. We don't have scooters, we don't have car share. And now they're going to dismantle 40 stations District 1, 8, 9, 13, and 14.
So, so I'm sorry.
General comment.
Well, that really was general comment, so do you want to speak to any of the items 6, 7, or 22 through 23? If not, I'm, I'm afraid you're gonna have to end because we have to give the same time to everyone.
Okay.
What I would suggest, if, I, I understand you were offended by the remarks, you may know there's been a recent council motion to help address some of this.
Yeah.
If you want, I'd be very eager to hear what you have to say, I can give my card to one of the sergeant-at-arms and feel free to email me.
Yeah, this council has to take a stand because it can't, this cannot continue that we have one minute and that we're thrown off when we, we have to speak. We are being harassed every time we're in this space and this needs to end by this council.
I hear you. Can the sergeants, one of the sergeants give the speaker my card? I, I designated a sergeant for the moment, she's coming up with the card. Hey Speaker.
Hi, good morning, my name is Armando Munoz, I'm doing a general, general public comment.
Great, please go ahead.
Thank you. So my name is Armando Munoz, I have been working at LAX for the past 15 years as a security officer. On behalf of my 5,000 coworkers that work at the airport at LAX, I am here to share why this is so important to us, the living wage orderance that just passed not so long ago. Our city is headed towards uncertain and condom times, but what is uncertain is the workers who make the airport function need a raise. And any raise that we get paid goes into the economy, we spend it on the necessities that the current moment, we can't afford. Three months ago, we made history, now let's finish the job for both the city and the workers who make LAX run. Please do everything you can to make sure that the draft orderance comes back to council soon so that our families and our entire city can start to see the benefits. Thank you very much, you have a nice day.
Thank you.
Before the next speaker comes, I'd like to call a few more names. Tiffany Childs, Andrew Graebner, George Bizetti, Lydia Grant, Cidis Barrios, Diana Garcia.
Hi Speaker.
I'm disappointed in you, Fable. I'll take all items and general public comment.
Go ahead.
By the way, I'm very offended by the anti-free speech things we heard up here, oh my gosh, I'm shaking, I feel so unsafe because of that anti-free speech woman we just heard. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let's see, item 25, we have a motion from Isabel and Unicef relative to funding a, an extend, to extend the lease agreement between the Department of General Services in Los Angeles Holdings LLC for a refresh spot/crisis response facility. This is a motion for $319,000, excuse me, $319,907.34. Now it says it's for additional homeless services but then indicates that it is for the lease costs. So I want us to all think about how much this city funnels taxpayer money into the hands of landlords. It's not enough that they get so much of workers' paychecks, but also a lot of the taxpayer funding that could just be purchasing property, maintaining city-owned property, is instead being furnished to someone just because they own something while it just removes funding that we could really use for those actual services and it's really unfortunate. We also have a reimbursement for all of the hullabaloo surrounding the Dodgers, that's item 33. I'm glad to see that we will be reimbursed for the cost incurred for this, for the city to host a celebration for a private organization, nothing against the Dodgers, it's just frustrating a city that's so lacking in services, that's so filthy, that has such a huge abortion population of unhoused residents, that we don't take that seriously and we're always throwing parties and these wealthy institutions are running ruckshot all over our city all the time, so I'm, I'm glad we're recouping some of those funds. We also have a Snitches Get Stitches Award, item 29, we keep reinstating this, I, it doesn't seem like it's going anywhere. It, maybe we could put some more funding into crime prevention, into community services, then we wouldn't have to, to levy these, these snitch rewards. To this time, it's for $75,000, if it didn't, if it didn't help at 50K, I don't know why 75K is gonna do much good. I also wanted to say, page 31 was missing from all of the agendas today, that's weird. We have some rent escrow account program motions on the agenda. By now you should know how I feel about the rent escrow account program, I just think it's funny that when landlords violate their contract, that they're never at a loss as long as they make proper abatements, they get to keep all that money and the landlord is out the time and inconvenience that they had to deal with. Counsel President has such a thin skin, it's no coincidence. He's so afraid of the things we say. It's not about the public interfering with meetings. We should have known from the moment he removed the option to comment on the phone. They claim it's to keep us protected, they want to have us ejected if we say things they find offensive like words that rhyme with hunt. What happened to the First Amendment? Instead of trying to protect it, the things you do will bring lawsuits. Shout out Smoke and Scan, everyone should also go follow Sabby Subs, the revolutionary blackout network, and do dissidents for some honest reporting outside the mainstream. Fable, really disappointing earlier, I think you were toeing the line of a Brown Act violation there.
Thank you. Hi Speaker, which items did you want to speak to?
I'm speaking in public comment.
Okay.
Red general public comment, but I'd, as a neighbor council who has submitted a CIS on an item, I'd like to be able to speak for an additional minute.
You're the...
Even though it's not an agenda item for today, this is critical information for the city and city attorney. Just one minute extra.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I am Lydia Grant, I'm the president of the Sunland Tungah Neighbor Council. First of all, I'm here to thank Councilmember Rodriguez for supporting our community in our latest battle. I did want to let the council members know that we learned last night from Ms. Rodriguez's office, that the soil dumping that our test show is toxic, that the county is refusing to let the city of Los Angeles test the soil, according to Ms. Rodriguez's staff member. So I think this is of grave concern as we think about these fires, that they're only testing for metals, they're not testing for the other things before dumping them, this is not a landfill, this is an open space dirt lot in the middle of a residential area with the, in a high wind velocity area that will blow whatever's in it all the way through the, the San Fernando Valley, especially the Northeast, so we're concerned about our neighbors in Lakeview Terrace and Solmar. I did, we have sent a letter...
Go ahead.
...of our request to the city and, and thank you because some of those issues have already been addressed, but I just wanted you all to have it so that you could help support our councilwoman in being able to get what we need to make sure that our communities are gonna be safe. We're actually requesting too that some of the funguses be tested, they don't test for those now and this is being, all the sturge is being put on the top of a hill where it's a wind tunnel through into the San Fernando Valley and also over to the Tahunga Wash which supplies drinking water for the city of Los Angeles. And they are also washing this into the storm drains. So we are hoping that we can get more help to make sure that this issue is addressed and again, I want to thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Before the next speaker comes, I'd like to call a few more names. Felipe Duarte, Gracie Blue, James Law, Jonathan Groth, Streffen Fable.
Hi, go ahead.
All items in general, which items are open again?
So it's items 6, 7, and 22 through 33.
Okay, so...
Please go ahead.
We have items 6 and 7, it looks like both of them are related to immigration-related things and such. So the city should, while the city considers all these immigration stuff, which is, which is good, we should, we should do that and the prohibition of, and I wonder on item 7, if the prohibit, prohibition of federal immigration, of federal, prohibition of use of city resources for federal immigration enforcement includes the prohibition of using LAPD resources for immigration enforcement? Because I'm hearing a lot that they're helping and assisting immigration officials and lying and claiming they aren't, that what they're doing is not actually assisting them when they are in fact assisting them. So we should make sure that the LAPD is not assisting Trump immigration officials. Alright, let's move on now, we have item, let's see, item 25, which is a, a refresh spot facility. So it's good that we're providing resources to unhoused people here. We should also make sure that we provide more resources and housing and such instead of criminalization and sweeps and you should abolish 4118. Now we have item 26, now I guess it's good that you're commemorating this although lighting up City Hall isn't really gonna do anything, but how, what are, what are you exactly you're doing for Muslim Americans with your stuff? Because I'm not really seeing much. So you do all kinds of performative stuff but nothing particularly of note to actually help them. We have item 27, which is more supplemental charter bus services for Heather Hutt, whatever the heck she's doing with them because you can find no information about it, the motion doesn't explain it. What exactly is going on with these supplemental charter buses, but I guess at least we know that she has them. Item 29, Unicef, you're never finding this person. It's been like over 15 years, it's been like 17 years. Who knows if this person's even still alive, living in the city? You're never finding the person. So we're using reward money for snitches and all this campaign and everything when who, we're never gonna find the person, it's been, we're not even gonna find the person, it's been 17 years. 31, oh this is even worse, this has been 20 years, McHattan. 20 years, you're not finding the person, why are we even, I mean even besides the whole reward money for snitches thing, you're not gonna find the person! Just blowing money for the...
General.
Not gonna find the person, it's just reward money for snitches. Item 33, you know, I guess at least the Dodgers are paying for it, but policing is bad either way. So for general public comment, let's see, as usual, most of you are not paying attention. I wonder what, what you're talking about over there Adrian that's more important than public comment? Maybe you can send your staffers away and once public comment's over, they can come back and you can have your conversation, right? Okay, you gonna go ahead and send them away now, since it's public comment?
You gotta address the council, Mr. Graebner, not individuals.
I'm addressing a member of the council. Why don't you then tell it, since we're supposed to address you or the council? Maybe the whole council can send their, his staffers away and then they can come back after public comment so he can listen to the public right now. So, yeah, just, I don't know what's going on in this place.
Thank you. The Speaker.
Hi, I'm here for a general public comment.
Great, go ahead.
Good morning council members, my name is Diana Garcia, I worked for the original Pantry Cafe for 17 years. This historic restaurant had been open for 100 years, it's been a month since the Riordan Trust decided to close the restaurant and misplaced me and my coworkers. We dedicated decades of our lives to this restaurant, we were loyal to this restaurant, we loved working at this restaurant and now that we are left without a job with nothing, no severance paid, no job, nothing, we are very worried for our future. I myself have a three-year-old that I need to support and I struggle to really, you know, make sense of what happened, just like my coworkers. We feel lost, scared, we don't know what our future will look like. We appreciate meeting with several council offices this morning and asked that you communicate with the owners. We also invite you to our Pancakes in the Streets action this Friday before council from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, we'll be right outside pantry. Finally, we ask for your continued support in reopening and preserving the original Pantry Cafe, which is a historic cultural monument.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello Speaker, which items did you want to speak to?
Thank you Attorney Groth, if you allow me, I would like to speak on 23, 24, 25, and the general.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Groth. Start with item number 23. Thank you Attorney, I would like to move on to item number 24.
Go ahead.
快乐起来的理由 Thank you, Attorney. I would like to move on to item number twenty-five. Uh, Attorney, I would like to move on to general public comment.
Yes, please.
My name is Mistress Shawnikwa, goddess Bonisha, and I, I'm here to advocate for our Figueroa community. We need healthy Figueroa prostitute so our single man can have a chance to experience what sexual intercourse feels like, especially for someone who never seen a vagina before.
This is not within the jurisdiction of the Los Angeles City Council.
We need more affordable Figueroa sex workers in our Figueroa community.
This is not within the jurisdiction of LA City Council, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes.
Can have, uh, some entertainment after a hard day of work after Figueroa community. We need a clean Figueroa community sex workers so we can have sex without being a Magic Johnson or HIV because we deserve clean sex in Figueroa community. Last week, I was trying to get, uh, Figueroa three minutes general non-agenda sex, but I was denied by the LAPD and by our city council. I deserve to have an orgasm in the city of LA.
Thank you, Speaker. Your time's expired.
All right, this will conclude, uh, public comment.
Mr. Spindler, which items do you want to speak on?
Once the reindeer is done.
Yes, and I'm glad Unisis is laughing at that. That's good.
Which items do you want to, let's start the clock.
Well, let's see, all the fucking goddamn items, goddamn general comment. So let's see here, your agenda only has half the pages, so we have to do half the, the agenda. Let's start. What do you go ahead?
Oh, yes. Well, we're gonna get money from the goddamn Dodgers. Fuck the Dodgers, a bunch of cheaters. So how come the New York Mets aren't covering part of the cost? Didn't they play in the World Series?
Hey, that's a good point. Yeah, the, the fucking, the, the New York Yankees should pay half of the cost. Actually, they should pay all of the cost for beating this ridiculously untalented, overpaid team known as the Dodgers. Fuck the Dodgers. Send them back to the dark garden of Brooklyn. They're no fucking good. So let's see, we only have half the agenda.
Well, let's see here. That's Mr. Fabel's fault, isn't it? You didn't give us half the pages, Fable.
God damn it, I'm missing half the items here. Oh, here we go.
CD ten? Oh, that's Heather Kant on beautification. Yes. So what's she doing? Five hundred thousand dollars, Unisis. You see what she's doing to you, Unisis? Heather's victimizing you, Unisis, in your district because Heather's getting hundreds of thousands of dollars to make her district pretty. And notice, Heather, you, she didn't sign the petition to ban the words and she gets more money while Unisis signed the petition to ban the words and gets eighty percent less funding for her district. So what does this mean?
It means anybody that signed Marquesi's motion is going to prison. I think you're right. Then we have number twenty-nine. A sheriff's deputy was murdered?
So what? Fuck him. That's not on the topic. We don't deal with sheriff's deputies. We have LAPD. Like over here on my, my right here, we got this incompetent Sergeant Clark. Now see, if something happens to LAPD, it's on topic. But if any of these sheriffs or CHP get killed, I think that's off topic and I don't think we should give a dime to this effort.
What, what about the murderer?
Oh, the murderer? Shout out, yo. Give him a gang sign, yo.
And then we have number thirty. Heather Kant again.
To, to street lighting repairs. You see, Unisis? You see what Heather's doing to you? She's repairing more street lights. I think that Heather is stabbing Unisis in the back and it must stop.
General.
Yes. So we'd like to know, did you pay that nice, pretty lady to come up here and make that fucking, uh, performance here? Uh, oh, oh, I, I'm afraid. I, I'm so nervous now. I can't speak. Why, this chick is so talented. She should have started Cinderella rather than that racist bitch Rachel that started it. Holy shit. So remember, we know who works for the nonprofits and when they get up here and talk and they're working to get city money. I think Streffan, you should look to see if they're registered as lobbyists because I think they're illegally lobbying without being registered. We're gonna get on that more. And remember, everybody, let's note who didn't sign the ban on the N-word. Hugo didn't sign the ban. How come you didn't sign the ban, Hugo? Because Hugo wants to keep his house and his pension. That's right. So remember, everybody, vote yes for Nicker and Kant to remain here on the council.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Time's expired.
All right, that concludes public comment for today's, uh, meeting. Thank you to everybody who came and thank you for everyone who endured, uh, public comment for today's city council meeting. Mr. Clerk, uh, what is before us at this time?
Mr. President, the council may reconsider item eight with twelve members present for adoption of the ordinance.
All right, uh, do we need a vote on reconsideration or can we just vote?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, um, open the roll on reconsideration of item number eight. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, now, item number eight with twelve members is before us. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, what's next?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on items twenty-two through thirty-three.
All right, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, what's next?
The council may now consider item six, called special by Councilmember Rodriguez, for which amending motion six A, Rodriguez Padilla, has been introduced, circulated, and posted on the bulletin board.
All right, item number six, as amended by Councilmember Rodriguez, seeing no, uh, speakers on this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, what's next?
Mr. President, there's a request to send items two and three forthwith.
Without objection, that'll be the order. What's next?
The council may now consider item seven, called special by Councilmember Jurado, for which amending motion seven A, Jurado Padilla, has been introduced, circulated, and posted on the bulletin board.
All right, uh, that item as amended is before us. Seeing no speakers on the queue, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, what's next?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Announcements, members. Mr. Soto Martinez.
Uh, thank you so much, uh, Mr. President. Um, I want to just make some brief comments on some of the items that were voted today. Uh, I want to thank, uh, some of my colleagues who helped, uh, work on these, on these motions. Uh, Councilmember Hernandez, Ramon, McCosker, Jurado, and Padilla. And thank you so much, uh, Councilwoman Rodriguez, for your amendments. Uh, the city departments who were all helped, helped craft this and the organizations that did this as well. Uh, we're talking about the California Immigrant Policy Center, CHIRLA, CARESIN, the ACOU, and so much more. And, you know, these motions are important because we have to use every single tool to fight back because we cannot normalize these human rights issues. Right now, innocent people are being sent to El Salvador, a country they've never been there before, without a hearing. Mothers and fathers are being taken to Guantanamo Bay and being held with nine eleven terrorists. Tens of thou, tens of thousands of unaccompanied children just got taken away their ability to have legal representation. So this whole rhetoric about this being about criminals is simply not true. This is about families and children. And we cannot play nice with this administration, trying to appeal to their better angels. They simply do not exist. And don't be fooled by some of the right-wing rhetoric that says these are symbolic gestures. They are not. Even their own administration is saying that people know too much of their rights, that they're not giving in to the, the pressure. And so the things we are doing are working, and this is an issue for many families of life and death, about keeping families together and supporting our, our, the entire immigrant community. So I want to just thank everyone who voted for this today to move this forward. I look forward to the reports coming back. And very soon, we're gonna expand, hopefully, beyond just a sanctuary city, but we're gonna do everything at our disposal to protect immigrant families. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Soto Martinez. Councilmember Jurado.
Thank you, Council President. I'm excited to share that the Carita Art Center opened in the Arts District this month. The center was established to preserve the legacy and works of Carita Kent, a trailblazing nun, educator, and artist. Her silk screen printing artwork can be seen in the halls of churches, nonprofits, and homes of activists. Throughout the sixties with contemporaries such as Andy Warhol, Carita's work grew increasingly political, urging viewers to consider poverty, racism, and injustice. And because of Carita's activist lens and the sisters, they actually got kicked out of the LA Archdiocese and they formed their own ministry called Immaculate Heart Community, where they could practice their faith in line with their progressive values. I am a proud alumna of Immaculate Heart High School, where I was taught in that same radical lens, and to be a woman of great heart and right conscience. Today, I'm joined by the leaders of the Carita Art Center and several Immaculate Heart alums. Her work is so relevant to us today and serves as a reminder that if we want justice, we must work for peace. And I encourage everyone to make time. It's in the Arts District, open on Saturdays from eleven AM to four PM. And admission is free, so everyone can enjoy her great work. Thank you so much and congratulations, Carita Art Center, in opening.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Jurado. Any other announcements, members? All right, uh, I have an announcement. On Friday morning at, uh, Van Nuys City Hall, we'll have city council and we will have a very special St. Patrick's Day, uh, celebration led by Council District Fifteen. So see you all bright and early on Friday, uh, morning. Seeing no other announcement, I'll, announcements, I'll ask everyone in the chambers to rise for adjourning motions. Any adjourning motions to the west? Seeing no adjourning motions to the east, we are adjourned for today's meeting. Thank you so much, everybody.